And we will open our meeting. I'm required to announce that I'm -- excuse me, my head's cold. I'm making a recording. Cal is making the recording. Lee Cam is making video recordings. Camera's not losing my voice already. Tonight, we have one hearing, one informal meeting, and a conversation with Fred. Now, before we open your meeting, we normally have at least five members. Right, now we have four members. That means if we vote on your petition, you'll need all four members voting in favor. If we had the regular five members, you could have one person vote to oppose your petition and four in favor, and they could still carry. But with only four members, you'd need unanimous vote. So you'll have a choice in a minute. Let's -- I'm gonna -- we'll defer the meeting minutes until later. We'll take care of our hearing now. Let's open our first hearing. Your name is Chaney?
Yeah, Kenneth Chaney.
Chaney. And it is 7:05. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, Acting Accords of Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, is amended. We'll conduct a public hearing on Thursday, February 21st, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Kenneth Chaney. He is requesting a special permit under Section 7.4 to place a 24-foot by 55-foot garage or a morton building within the setback but no closer than 10 feet from the right property line as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The property is located at 153 County and is owned by Kenneth and Paula Chaney. Excuse me for just a minute, I need to get a Kleenex. Figure if I have a lot, I won't need it. You are applying for a special permit for a large garage on a piece of land that is over 80,000 square feet, I think?
Almost two acres.
1.97.
Eighty-six thousand and four square feet, plus or minus, with no wetlands. And you want to put your large garage into the setback. Why specifically do you need to put the garage in that location?
Because a lot of the other area is a lot more trees and this water drains off the driveway into that front area. And it would be awes-- it would kind of real farm off the side like the house itself.
Is this garage for some business purpose?
No, this is our personal.
It's a pretty big building.
Yeah. I'm actually being selling a house in New Bedford. I have a lot of things in the garage up there that I didn't want to bring over.
You provided with your petition, with your package, three sketches.
Yeah.
And the sketches don't really agree with each other too well. Two of them in particular. Excuse me. So it's unclear exactly where you want to put this 55-foot-long garage. The one thing that is clear is you want to put it 10 feet from the side setback, from the side property line.
Yes.
Now, with property this big, you have a lot of space to put the garage in a place that would not impact the bylaws. And you are asking for a special permit under 7.4. And let me just read something for you. Did you look at the bylaws?
No, I didn't.
It says, "Special permits shall only be issued for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and subject to its general or specific provisions and only if the special permit granting authority finds that the following conditions are met. Number one, the use is not noxious, harmful, or hazardous, is socially and economically desirable, will be in existing or potential need, and it would seem that a garage would certainly do that. Number two, the advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects, and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood and the environment would not be greater than could be expected from development which would occur if the special permit were denied." And what all those words mean in number two is that if you put the garage where you want to as opposed to somewhere else in the middle of the lot that wouldn't intrude into the setback, that it would be better than if you put it where you want to. In other words, if we denied it and you had to move the garage where it didn't intrude,
Right.
it wouldn't be as bad.
Right.
And number three, the applicant has no reasonable alternative to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. We often get applicants who want garages or additions on houses or porches that are within the setback, but they have 5,000 or 8,000 square foot lots, and they really have no alternative.
Right, right.
You have an 88,000-square-foot lot with no wetland.
Right.
So you actually do have a lot of alternatives for locating your garage.
Well, where it is, I mean, I can put it there and not go for the special permit, but I would have to bring it very close to the house. It would probably be five foot off the house, five or six.
If you want to keep it on that side of the house.
Yeah, if I wanted to keep it there. Because like I said, we're on the backside of the house. We have a pool that's permitted. We told it permit. That's on the opposite side. There's a pool there behind the house. It's a septic in the leachant field. So the only place there is, is in the front of the house. But there's a lot of trees and it's very, it's like very low. So all the water drains into there. And we had a driveway, well, there's a driveway that dumps. And when we get a lot of rain and stuff, that's in front of the house, like in front of the house going towards County Road. It gets pretty sloppy out there. So it would be a tremendous amount of fill to bring that in. We considered that. But where it is, is if it would be in 24 by 24 with saying the 20 feet on the property line, it would be very close to the house. If you got -- do you have the drawings? Can I come up here?
Yeah, sure.
And I do have a letter from my neighbor that he gave on, I don't know if it mattered. That's the gentleman. Yeah, he got the same drawings.
Is he on this side?
Yes, he's right here.
What I -- my comment about the drawings is that we have these three drawings that you submitted.
Yeah.
And this sketch and this sketch show the garage in different places.
Right, yeah. When I went with Matt with Nate, this one's actually, looks like it should be, this is actually really the right one here. But like I said, the building's 24. We got 51 from here to the gentleman's property line. If you add up the numbers, it comes up to, if I went with 20 feet, the original what it's supposed to be, the 20 feet, plus the 24, that is 54. That would allow me to be only about six, seven feet off my house. So as the snow would come off the house, off the building, because it being high in the house, it would probably, it could slide even with the snow blocking. It would probably end up sliding off to the house.
The letter you have dated February 15th says, "I, Thomas Motta," and he is at 151 County. "I, Thomas Motta, do not have an objection to Kenneth Chaney at 153 County Street for the special permit for the garage no closer than 10 feet from the right property line."
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Of course.
I took a Google picture of the property and printed it out. Could you kind of show me on the map that this is where it's going to go? And my concern is how close is it going to be to this house? And I do have--
I gotta put my glasses on.
Do have another question. Even if it's not being used as a business--
Storage.
As a storage.
As a storage.
We do have a bylaw that permits home occupation. So I would hope this is never going to be used for any types of business, any types of home occupation.
I'm gonna work on cars and stuff in there.
You are? Well, that might concern me because depending on how close you are, if it makes noise, you could be pretty close to that house, not to this. Is that the gentleman that said he was okay with it?
Where's my house?
Your house is right there.
Yeah, no, this, see, the house is, there's a, yeah, this house, I believe.
Yeah, but did we get anything from this gentleman? Does he have any?
I don't know.
No, he didn't show up either.
Janice raises a good point. One of the issues we have around home occupations is that people will sometimes come in and want to add onto a house. And then as soon as it's done, they turn it into a home occupation. And our bylaws prohibit building specifically for a home occupation. You're only supposed to use what you already have.
Right.
And I can understand how somebody approaching retirement, I'm there myself, might want to do a little, have a little part-time home business. So home occupations are not out of the question. But sometimes people build really big home occupations, and we're not supposed to do that.
So is that why you need such a large garage?
Well, like I said, I'm selling a house in New Bedford that I'm bringing a lot of. I have some old machines that I'm gonna bring over two of them, but I have a lot of stuff that I have a challenge of that I'm gonna be putting in there. So I'm figuring I'm gonna put a lot of that stuff in the back.
What kind of machines?
I have an old lathe, I have an old lathe, a wood lathe, and a milling machine.
You gonna wire this place up for those machines?
Well, I'd have to bring power to the unit, power to the building.
Three phase maybe?
Yeah.
Can I just say something? Well, it's easier with the electricity next to the house because we would have to run the electricity with the area that we wanted to do it. And where you're saying that if we put it in front of the house, we would have to run the electricity if power away. So it's more convenient.
I understand that, but that's not a consideration. But I, certainly that makes sense. We, excuse me, I really apologize. We have to be thoughtful and careful about what the bylaws allow and what they don't allow. And we're usually faced with people that have very small lots. This is not a case with you. You have plenty of room. Unfortunately, that's a disadvantage for you because you have the room to put the garage elsewhere.
Right.
I might suggest, as a middle ground here, that you continue this hearing, which means we basically put it on pause, contact an engineer to look at your situation and see if the engineering firm can suggest an alternative that would be more in harmony with the bylaws and accomplish what you want.
What about, would you ever consider making it smaller? I, you want, I know that's what you want.
Well, for the special permit that we're going, well, is that gonna matter though, going small? What do you, what do you mean?
I don't know.
24, you're just about allowed to.
24, that part I don't mind. It's the length of it. It seems like it's being built for something a lot more than storage. But you're saying you're gonna work on cars there? And I'm concerned about how close it is to the neighbor if that would be a noise issue for them. Not necessarily, I mean, I can't tell you what to do with your garage or anything. I'm just kind of--
It's an automotive place. It's gonna be just, you know, I mean, if I'm working on my car, oil changes, stuff like that.
Your car, nobody else's cars? Nobody else's cars?
My son wants to use the garage.
Yeah, no, I don't mean that. I mean, you're not gonna have people come in and you're gonna be working on the cars, okay? No, that would be my concern.
Because like I said, I can, if we were going for the special permit because of the, I guess I thought it was a variance when I talked to Nate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A variance is even more restrictive than a special permit.
Well, I wasn't sure. That's what I was kind of under the pressure when I talked with Nate. But like I said, if we don't go with a special permit, we're still, you know, I mean, it will fit there. I just gotta shuffle it. It would have to be shuffled over to the--
You can do it by right.
To the house. And I would be closer to my house. But it would probably be about six feet off of the corner of the house.
One practical reason that we watch the setbacks carefully is that in addition to providing a buffer to your neighbor, the setback also provides a lane along your property for an emergency vehicle. And you probably have trees there and you're gonna tell me, well, we couldn't get a fire truck through. But that is a rational point of view for having a fairly wide setback. A 20-foot setback would let an emergency, could let an emergency vehicle get through in some situations. And that's another reason that we hesitate to just give away this kind of thing. I would suggest where you have 88,000 square feet and no wetlands, that you ask for an engineer to look at alternatives that might make sense for you.
Right.
We might, for example, we might be amenable to, instead of forcing you to move the garage over 10 feet, maybe split the difference with you.
Right.
But it still widens the setback on that side. It lessens the amount of nonconformance.
Right, and I was willing to do that when I did go in for the building and was speaking to this young lady and Nate. Because all I really needed was like three to four feet just to step it off the house. But Nate says I would usually just go with, you know, I mean, shoot for the 10.
I wouldn't be, Jeff, I wouldn't even be asking these questions if the building, I didn't, wasn't that big. That building was a concern for me, thinking about possibilities for it. I mean, you will maybe move, sell your house at some point, and that could be, somebody might consider doing--
Oh, you mean someone else buying it?
Yeah, yeah. So I was just concerned about the size of it. Actually, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it to be, I mean, they'd have to cut down a lot of trees. And that's kind of nice to have, trees.
No, where it is, we won't be cutting a lot.
I know that, and that's what I'm saying.
Where we would be going.
Right.
If we have to move it anywhere else, because the rest is all like a wraparound, it's a driveway. It would have to be in the front of it.
That's just my opinion. I don't, I don't know if I'd want you to cut all those trees. But that's just my opinion.
Dave, what's the setback reaching to? What is it? What does it mean?
10 feet, he's right.
I don't know.
I think he's right, 10 feet.
Yeah, it's 10 feet. I spoke to the, going out there. And that, where it is, even if we have, even if we did have to shuffle it over to the house, that it would be probably--
Well, I was thinking more of moving it back.
Yeah, but there's the whole, you shouldn't feel back.
Well, that's the whole, you can still, you can move over.
Oh, back and head to the left?
Yeah.
He's got a pool back there.
We have a swimming pool.
No, no, not to the left of the house. Move your garage back.
Straight back.
And then move it over from the property line.
Oh, you're saying shuffle it? I know what you're saying.
Move it back and over?
Yeah. Like she was just saying though, there is a lot of trees over here.
Well--
Because as it is, I'm concerned about the proximity to this house right here.
And that's what I said.
That's awful close.
Right.
That's Mr. Motta?
Yes.
I'm not sure that is Mr. Motta.
You've got a lot of storage over here too, you know?
Yeah.
But that's up to you. I mean, if you want to pursue it and you think that we should continue it. I was just giving my opinions about it.
Did you wish to speak to this petition, sir?
I'm there. Mr. McCarron, I'll look next door to you.
Which one is that? Oh, where the swimming pool is?
Yeah.
Yeah, how you doing?
Yeah, yeah. I noticed that Centel really doesn't show what's proposed. So can I look at the plan?
Sure.
Good to see you.
Same here.
That's the plan. This is a variation on the plan. This is County Road.
Yeah.
County Road would be where the heel of your--
This is County Street right here.
Yep.
Yeah?
Further down, but yes.
We live over here. And my wife and I discussed this, and we have no problem with what people post. We're at the beach.
Now, if I was just to go with, instead of going for the special permit and just stay within the guidelines of the 20 feet?
You wouldn't be here.
Well, right. But, you know, I mean, the reason why I talked is, I know when I talked to Nate, you were there, and I told Nate what I was doing. He says, he didn't really see it. You know, I mean, like I said, I can't tell you whether it's up there or not or not. But he said we do the, I guess, a special permit. I thought it was a variance. I was, but he says they do it all the time. I mean, I will, I can look and see if I can--
Well, we do it all the time. And almost always, it's for lots that are 10, 15, 20,000 square feet. It's for lots that are really constrained because they're very small lots.
Right, right.
That's not the case here. And you have no wetland. You did suggest that you have some contours or topography that would be difficult. And actually, a variance in that case would work better because a variance addresses land that has geologic or topographic problems.
The thing with that would probably would dampen the whole, because it, just to do that, my buddy does all of it, does excavating work. And he said, we have to bring in so much fill just to, to make it so water wouldn't drain into the area.
Well, the point is with a variance, that depression in your land that makes it expensive and difficult would be a rationale, would be a reason to permit something like this.
Right, right.
So in some ways, a variance in this case might have been better. Normally, a variance is more restrictive and more difficult.
I don't know if you could prove a hardship. I don't know if you could prove a hardship.
Well--
This here, like I said, I didn't know, I didn't even, you brought the special permit up. I didn't, I was just under the impression when we went and sat with Nate and went over everything.
I think this board has always been very, we try to work with the applicant, and we try to make it work. We're not like someone that is here to deny things. We're trying to make it the best--
Now, if I stay with not the special permit and just, I mean, I can't really shorten it up on the width because of the 24, it's just about, again.
That's a standard width.
Right.
Yeah, but the length is long. It's a, it's a big building.
Yeah, you can have a lift.
I was thinking, yes, it's possible, but no lift.
Don will be over.
I'm a car guy. I know where he's coming from. You can eat up 55 feet just in your own projects real fast, including having a couple pieces of equipment in the back to work off of. You can eat it up real fast. So I know where you're coming from for the 55 feet.
And he's gonna have a lathe and a milling machine.
Yeah, and an area to work on if you're gonna do a frame off restoration.
No, I gotta--
I mean, there's a lot of--
I would--
And what I want is like the challenge I, I've had it for five, four years, and it's got only six. I want to put that in the back, not in the front, where I gotta shuffle, I shuffle things around all the time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you. You have a choice now if you would like us to vote on this or continue it till we have a fifth member. The fifth member would have to review this and make sure that he is comfortable. But I'm gonna tell you right now personally, I have trouble with this because you have 88,000 square feet.
Right.
And one thing that you could do, honestly, is as I said, ask to continue and get an engineer to take a look at it and look at alternatives with you to see where it could be placed to be more in harmony with the bylaw.
Right, I know what you're saying about the thing. Well, often, this gentleman's a man, and that's where my swimming pool is. It goes from the driveway and it drops like three feet. So I could, we toss that around, but just bringing, going down, because I see it when water drains where it ends up. And the pool's there. And really, the only place to really be able to put it would be in the, in the front. But a lot of trees would have to be taken down. And we'd be looking right out of our front window right at the garage.
Well, what is it, they say, if you're gonna make an omelet, you gotta break a few eggs.
Yeah.
Well, the other, I would still go with the suggestion that you move this back and over.
Right.
It's gonna be pretty much in the same area that you want it, but it's gonna put you 20 feet away from your property line. And it's gonna put you about 12 feet away from the leachant field.
Right. So that's kind of what we were gonna do. We were gonna shuffle back. Because like I said, if I just say I pass on this, I got the room. Because it's 24 by the 20 feet, that's 54. And then I just gotta be, whatever the difference, 70 feet off my house. And we get away from all of this.
So you have, you have some choices right now. Your choice is to ask us to make a decision. Your choice is to ask to continue so that you can maybe re-engineer this.
Right.
Another choice, if you go with what Dave suggested, which is to move the garage back and to the left so it conforms to the bylaw, the setback, then you don't need a special permit. You don't need to be here, and so you ask to withdraw.
Right. Or can I just leave it where it is? Well, I probably would still set it back five feet.
You can't leave it where it is unless you get a special permit for it.
Well, if I shuffle it towards my house.
Right.
Yeah, you could move it over 10 feet and so you have a 20-foot setback. Then you don't need to be here.
Right. Well, it's not really, it's the side that's the issue, not the back. It's the side.
Right here.
Yes.
Right here.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so you can move over.
Because even moving this over, I would have been like six feet off of this, and I got the 20 feet right there. But it's close to the house.
If this is 14 feet, you need another 10. So you're gonna move it over 10 feet. You'll have four feet between the house and the garage.
Right.
If you do that, then you conform to the bylaw. You don't need to be here. You don't need a special permit. You need nothing from us.
Right.
I'm not opposed to it. I just was concerned about the possibility of noise and what you were gonna do with that as opposed to just a regular, like, garage.
I don't like to do stuff like this if it's clearly not needed. In some cases, it clearly is needed. But I don't think it's needed in this case.
Yeah, I feel the same way. It's just, there's plenty of land there. I understand what you're saying about not wanting to cut trees down and stuff like that. But you do have more than enough land to be able to not to infringe into the setback.
And you have at least two options right now. One is to simply move it over 10 feet, and another is to move it back and to the left as opposed to relocating at some other place on your property.
Right. See, part of the problem with moving it back and to the left there is the room. But that house has a French drain system. And like the gutters, there's, the way they have, it dumps off in that, like I said, that area gets, I mean, there's, right on the backside of the house is like a little pond there.
You need an engineer to look at this for you.
Right.
You really do. I mean, quite honestly, to be blunt with you, to be very direct, you came to us with plans that we should have thrown out immediately. We're supposed to have fully dimensioned, properly dimensioned, engineered plans. You have three sketches, none of which agree with each other. I mean, you drew this, right?
Yes, we did that on--
See, look, you got 10, you got 10, you got 10 feet there and you got 14 feet here. See, look, you got 10, you got 10, you got 10 feet there, and you got 14 feet here.
Yeah.
So it's not even to scale. What do you want to do?
Well, I'm not gonna take the vote, because I can just, I mean, see the floor right now. I mean, where it's going, so.
See, so you could ask to continue, which means it's like pushing the pause button. You can go away for a month or two months, figure out what you want to do, and come back to us with a modified plan or with an set of engineering drawings, or maybe you choose to do something that won't require something.
Yeah, well, that's what I, I'm gonna lean towards that. I gotta, no, I mean, we gotta talk, because I know she didn't really want it that close to the house. But I don't want to stick it way in the back too, where there's gonna be a chance that I'm gonna be taking water into the place that we tie to the rains. And like I said, either that or it's gonna have to have a tremendous fill that would just have to bring it much higher. And then where does my water, because the gutters all drain off. There's, I guess they call it French drain system.
Sounds like the drain system needs some attention too.
Right.
So would you like to continue? It's just pushing the pause button.
Do you have, do we, can we take a few minutes to talk?
Sure, yeah.
All right, yeah, we're not gonna continue. I'm gonna look at, you know, I mean, moving it or, I'll toss around. I gotta get more now if I dealt with the dividends, because they only gave me pricing, and they already, I already paid for. I mean, a basic, not a full, just on the 24, maybe taking two more feet off it, and seeing how it is with two thousand.
So you really should continue. You really should continue, which means you take a month away to go figure out what you're gonna do, come on back and talk and continue the discussion. That's continuing.
All right.
That's the smart thing to do, if you don't mind me directing you. Before we decide, I do want to read into the record. We have a February 11 memo from the Board of Health that says, "According to the plan submitted, the proposed garage meets the required setbacks to the septic system and leaching field. Please note, garage only, not to be used as habitable space." I mean, it can't live there. Can't turn, can't turn into a-
Yes, yes, he told us that, and I believe she told us that.
And we have a January 29 memo from the CONCOM Conservation Commission. "The proposed garage for 153 County Road may proceed without review from the Conservation Commission provided the work is beyond any jurisdictional wetland area, while the 100-foot buffer is only M A G I S wetlands. Mass G I S wetlands overlay map shows a small isolated wetland on the premises."
What was that, show what?
"The mass G I S wetlands overlay map shows a small isolated wetland on the premises."
On my front?
That's what the CONCOM claims. So there's a little bit of research for you to do. The state thinks you have a little bit of wetland on your property. And when there's wetlands involved, the CONCOM gets involved. When they get involved, all of a sudden, lots of things happen. So you probably want to research that.
All right. Now, can I have a copy of that, no? So I can get a hold of the state then?
No, start with the Conservation Commission.
All right. I'll write that down.
See, none of this, none of this is, none of this is bad.
Yep.
This is the homework you should have done before you came here.
Right, right.
You came to us a little early. So I would suggest, with your permission, that we continue your hearing to March, which would be the 21st, I think. I think it's always that way, Ben, where except for a week here. It's probably the only day of the year I remember.
Conservation Union?
Conservation Commission.
Commission, thank you.
And that's right over here.
It's a town board. You can ask in Town Hall, they can direct you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, we'll continue. And like I said, I'll look at that other number one now.
So you'd like to keep-
So I can move it out, I'll be making it two feet.
So you'd, you'd like to continue to our March meeting, which is March 21st, right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Who cared to make a motion to accept their request to continue?
Without prejudice? Do we do it without prejudice?
Continuance?
Yeah.
No, 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 that would be for a withdrawal.
Okay.
So you gave the motion, and Joe has seconded any further discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, please. Excuse me, excuse me, again. So we'll see you in a month. You've got a lot of homework to do.
Right.
To figure out what, to figure out what you're gonna do.
Right. Now, if I come back in a month and say, hey, I'm moving it closer to the house, possibly making it two feet wider then.
Smaller.
Small, width-wise.
You're gonna move, if you come back and you say, I'm gonna move it closer to the house and I'm gonna have the 20 feet, means you don't need a special permit, you need nothing from us, then you ask to withdraw.
Okay, so we would have to call?
And that's just like flipping the off switch. It just stops everything.
All right. All right, yeah.
And Nate can fill you in on all this.
All right.
So let's see. So we'll see you then, we'll see you then in one month.
If you come into the building department, I can help you with the-
Seven o'clock, same time, okay.
Do we have anything else scheduled?
Wetlands and stuff. If you did come in, I probably could show you the wetland.
Yeah, first thing, I want to look at the wetland thing, because when we bought the house, I mean, they said we didn't have none. We bought it like years ago.
Get your property, I need to see.
I know there was wetland. We bought it off of our bar. And he said, maybe wetlands was, is the back of the house, but off to the other gentleman off behind us, going towards our high road. But we're showing on like the plan.
You can look on what he's talking about, the mass G I S, which I did do, but I can't get it to print out. It shows where wetlands are.
Right.
Okay, so we'll see you in a month.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Was that March 21st?
Yes.
Was it the same time?
Yes. Yes, we routinely meet the third Thursday of the month.
Okay.
And so that would be the third Thursday.
Thank you.
Good luck. So we had next on our agenda an informal meeting with Nolana Ricky regarding a possible request for a special permit for a doggy daycare facility at 2 Bedford Street. That's, according to Google Maps, 2 Bedford Street is- Thank you. I thought it was Ocean Spring.
Ocean Springs on the other side of the street.
Excellent. But she's not here, or he's not here. I assume it's a she. Fred, why do you want to be on the zoning board? Why do you want to be on the zoning board?
Because I'm interested.
Things have changed.
Laws haven't changed very much.
Probably the biggest change since you were on the zoning board is the 40B applications and projects. You know what those are?
I know what they are, yeah. The stuff that people don't want. That's what they are, that's what they truly are. And they had, at the time, when I was involved, we didn't know anything about it. And they had the state come down and try to explain what our job was, which none of us had any understanding. But one of the things that struck me-
We can hear each other now.
Okay. One of the things that struck me is when they got finished explaining what none of us understood and still didn't understand, is that when we got in the project like that going, they said when it was- They were saying, "And when you were finished and you were ready to issue these things, they said you also had to advertise that these were available, these properties. And they said it was mandatory that we advertise in Brockton." I thought that was a-
I think, I don't think that's true.
Well, I'm either a liar or I heard wrong.
No, no, it, that may have been true then. The laws, the 40B law has changed. It seems like every year, there's a little change to it.
Well, I mean, the point was, at that time, I mean, why would they even start off saying that? I always thought that affordable housing would first for people who live in the area. And maybe I was probably wrong on that. I mean, my horizons were very narrow. And I can see where, there's plenty of people who need housing. And everyone should and required to make that effort to provide that. But to specify, they didn't say New Bedford, or Millburn, or Fall River.
We don't get involved with who is chosen to move in. That's not, that's nothing to do with us.
I understand that, but why would they say you had to act, they accident it, Brockton, no other town. That part I don't understand. They had, they had a plan.
We have very little control over 40Bs, even less now than we did when we had our first 40B, which was what?
Residence, was it? Was it the residence?
No. No, it was the guy who never finished it on Bridge Street. The one that Bob put-
Oh, the electrician.
I think he was an electrician.
He was. I can't remember his name. I can picture him.
Something, right.
What was it?
And then it was, and then the next one was Woods Edge, and then it was La Baron, I think.
Still lives.
And then, and it's still going on. La Baron is a huge project. And that's been changing with new owners and new developers and new rules and regulations. As a zoning board, we have very, very little control over what can happen. And we can, we're really only allowed to look at three or four aspects of the project. We can't do brain surgery on a project the way we did with this guy's garage.
Where do we stand on our requirement? The requirement that they say we have to satisfy our requirement that certain, either space or units.
The quota, we have to, we need to have, 10% of our housing units have to be affordable.
We have 10%.
I don't know if we do have 10%.
I thought you said that.
No, that's the requirement. As long as we have not met the requirement, there were, actually, were two criteria. One was 10%, and the other was a growth rate of 3/4 of a percent per year. Now, I don't know if that's still true. But as long as you were, if you had met either of those criteria, then you could tell a 40B developer, go away. But if you haven't met that, then the 40B developer can come down on you like a ton of bricks.
My understanding today is that the other requirement is that they can judge it by the amount of space that's been occupied by affordable housing. So you can qualify for your house, your town has already had up the space used up, or made the 10%. That's, that's, well, I think the latest.
Could be, could be. We-
And I don't know which, if you have a choice on that.
We're lucky that when we're faced with a 40B project, and I think we have another one coming up, when we're faced with a 40B project, Town Council is here with us, and their Town Council's really good. So we got, we got a lot of help, a lot of guidance, and a lot of steering from Town Council, and they know the ins and outs.
Do you get involved much? Does the board get involved much?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We do get involved. The other thing that may or may not be different from year and years on the zoning board, as you probably saw dealing with this petitioner, we work very hard to try and work with the petitioner to help reshape a project so it conforms or to make it, make it less non-conforming. We turned down very, very few, but many of the, many of the projects or the requests that come to us, we work with the petitioner to shape it a little bit, make it better.
I think everyone deserves a fair shake, including the town. I mean, if a fellow can meet the requirements, he should get it. If he can, he should. I mean, you protect him, and you protect the town. And if the bylaws don't work, then you should change the bylaws. That's the way I feel about it. It shouldn't be who you are.
Oh, no. I don't-
And I wondered tonight, I wondered why it was, he was here on a special request, I forgot what you titled.
Special permit?
Yeah, as opposed to a variance.
Somebody gave him, was it Nate that pushed him?
I think Nate guided him. Because a variance is very difficult to get, and I don't think that he had all the qualifications to apply for-
You don't think he had one?
I don't think he could have qualified for a variance. He didn't meet everything.
A variance is difficult.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, I still didn't hear.
Oh, that's okay.
Can you repeat it?
What's that?
What, what she said, I just, my hearing is off.
Just the variances are very difficult to get.
I understand, I understand. But there's also rules that say you can do certain things, you have to apply for that. He's, he was really looking for a variance, a variance from the side lot line.
Yeah.
Now, a variance is harder to get, but if it's mandatory, I mean, houses can get under the counter by-
I tried to counsel him that way. I think what I really want to do is counsel him to revise his plan so he doesn't need anything.
Well, I, I don't know about this thing, but it would, my thought is that he should have come in with a variance. And when he came in with that, I think he was off base. Because that's for you. He's looking for a variance. And good luck to him. I think a person, if he can, should get exactly what he wants.
We meet almost always once a month, almost always. Last month, we did meet twice because we had a special project to consider. Third Thursday, almost always. It's usually here. If we have no petitions, I don't think we've, I don't think we've ever met when we have had a petition. I don't think so. Right. I don't know what else to tell you. We have five regular members, and normally, we have five regular, and we now have three associates. And I invite everybody to be involved in everything. And when we're missing a full member, then I ask an associate to be a voting member. But that's the way it's always been. I can't think of anything else to tell you about what we do. We're very informal, as you can tell. I don't know how it was 30 years ago when you were here.
I know you weren't wearing a suit.
I don't wear neckties anymore. Got rid of those a long time ago.
Well, anyway, I'm interested in, I know my own thoughts about a lot of things.
And we do a lot of administrative communication by email. And you have an email account. So if you're gonna join, if the selectman will have you, then we'll, we'll need to have your email address so that we can send things. And we obviously don't discuss petitions by email. But things like planning and scheduling and so forth, we can do. The Attorney General is pretty strict with how we run meetings now.
Well, they ought to be.
So we try to obey the rules.
I think when a, when a fellow comes in front of the board for our special permit or a variance, he ought to be specifically told why he's getting it or why he's denied it.
He is.
Well, that's one, that's stuff that I believe in.
He is. I'll let you read some of the decision papers we write. It's all listed.
I think that's the way to do it.
So what questions do you have for us?
Where do you get your haircuts?
I just do my own.
Well, I suspected that.
Cheaper, too.
Yeah, I bet.
And I haven't lost an ear.
You can get that off.
What's your email address, Fred?
P F Correa.
P F C...
Yeah, all law case stuff. At Comcast dot net.
It's I E A, right?
I E A.
E I A at Comcast.
Dot net, is that dot net?
Do you, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, all law case stuff.
It works either way.
Is it? It will?
Yeah. Does anybody have any challenges for Fred?
You know, one of the things, I don't know if you people know about it, but there was a long time ago, an issue of a paper called, or booklet, whatever you wanna call it, called Land Use Management, you ever heard of it?
Yes.
Have you ever checked it out on the internet? Got a lot of good stuff. It gives you a lot of decisions made by judges about certain issues with, and it's, I think, a place to learn stuff.
We, we often get things like that from Town Council, particularly when it applies to a hearing or something, some deliberation we have coming along, we'll get two or three or four cases and how they were decided, because it may be relevant to what we're doing.
How does he, does he just have to do that, or you ask him?
Town Council usually works very closely with us when we have petitions and hearings that we think are gonna be troublesome or complex. Simple ones like tonight.
About who is the Town Council?
We use Koppelmann and Page, it's a firm in Boston, they specialize in municipal...
Koppelmann?
Koppelmann, KP Law, Koppelmann and Page.
KP Law?
KP Law, they're very good. We've had at least a half a dozen different lawyers come through, and they've all been extremely good and helpful across the board, very easy to work with.
Well, it helps a lot when you've got a lawyer that knows what he's talking about.
Or she, that's right.
Or she.
Yep. Okay, let's do a couple, let's touch on a couple of other things before we break up tonight.
Well, I haven't had supper.
Go have supper, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Good to see you, Fred.
See you, Fred, take, take care.
Do you folks have a chance to look at the minutes?
I did.
I did.
I looked at them. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
A motion to approve the January seventeen, seconded by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The only other comment, you, I suppose you folks got this package from Mass Housing, I think in summary, it looks like, which one was this for? This is for Bridge Street. If I read the executive summary properly, it sounds like the developer is taking less money out of it than he could. Did I read that right? Did you read it?
I read some of it, I didn't...
The main thing I was looking at was to say, they were gonna say he was way off base or anything like that, and it didn't say...
No, no, no.
Well, I think it was eighty-seven thousand dollars or something it was taken out of it.
Eighty-six, yeah, eighty-six, eighty-seven. The cost examination is consistent with Chapter forty-B guidelines and practices. Mass Housing believes the developer has not exceeded the maximum profit allowed to be earned on this development, as indicated in the regulatory agreement. I'm happy with that. Do we have anything else to discuss? It is seven fifty-five, I declare the meeting adjourned.